For the pledge of allegiance.
Drew, you good?
Drew is always good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, as well as Mr. Andrew Golis, who's joined us tonight. Very happy he's here.
Thank you for having me.
So we'll go through the agenda. This is a light lifting evening. We will go over the minutes of the special meeting of December 23rd, January 14th, regular meeting. That will be followed by community relations announcements in open forum. Any appointments or resignations, of which I believe there are none. We have four scheduled appointments. Senator Ann Goby is with us today, a change of license type for Country Farms, and two Chapter 61 removal requests, two items under new business, a request for a common vic by Yankee Diner, and a special alcoholic beverage license request. We have the Civilian Traffic Commission under Old Business, and four committee reports, as listed, Public Safety Building Capital Campaign update, Marijuana Advisory Committee, Charlton Sustainability Center, and Fay Mountain Farm. After that, we have one item under policy review, which is the schedule of meetings. We have a next regular meeting on February 11th, 2020, and that is it. There is no executive session tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of December 23rd.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Chairman, follow up to that. Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 14th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. There are quite a few announcements. Thank God for pinching Zoom. Okay. 2020 dog licenses are now available.
Is that easier?
Can you pinch and zoom that one?
I can't.
So, 2020 dog, my eyeglasses got driven over today, my reading glasses. So 2020 dog licenses are now available. New this year, you can pay online at www.towncharlton.net. Online payments and licenses will be mailed to you. At the town clerk's office, payable by cash or check only, or by mail, and that is payable by check only. Also, Taste of the Towns at St. Joseph's Church Hall, 10 H. Putnam Road Extension, Saturday, February 29th, 2020, from 6:00 p.m. until 8:30. Tickets are available at the Charlton Senior Center or Cornerstone Bank in Charlton. You can call 508-868-5289, and their website is reascharlton, R-E-A-S, charlton.org. Lottery calendar, February 2020, Charlton Reyes Foundation Annual Fundraisers. Your $10 donation to purchase this lottery calendar gives you a chance to potentially win 31 times, and at the same time, help your most vulnerable neighbors with their heating and cooling needs. Calendars are available at the Charlton Senior Center, 508-248-2231, or 508-868-5289. Sand for seniors. In winter, stairs and walkways become slippery with ice and snow. Do you need a bucket of sand to prevent falls? The Charlton Fire Department is pleased to announce their Sand for Seniors program. Charlton firefighters will deliver a five gallon bucket of sand to your residents. This program is offered to Charlton residents only, age 60 and over, who live in a private residence. Call 508-248-2231, Charlton Senior Center, to order your bucket. This program is made possible through the cooperation of the Home Depot, the Charlton Highway Department, and the Charlton Council on AIDS. Nomination papers will be available in the town clerk's office starting on Monday, February 3rd, 2020, and are due back by Friday, March 13th, 2020. Please note that the town clerk's office will be closed on Thursday, February 6th, for a conference. Wednesday, February 21st, 2020, is the last day to register to vote for the presidential primary to be held March 3rd. Any questions, see the town clerk's page on the website or call their office. The 2020 annual town election will be Saturday, May 2nd, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. There are several seats available. Two selectmen seats, four and five, for three years. One assessor seat for three years, one board of health member for three years. Two cemetery commissioners, one three-year term and one year to fill a vacancy. One planning board member, one for five years. One recreation commissioner for three years. Two library trustees for three years. Two water and sewer commissioners for three years. One town clerk for three years. One tree warden for three years. One Dudley Charlton Regional School community member for three years, and one for one year. One Bay Path School community member for three years. One moderator for three years. And two housing authority seats, one for five years and one for two years to fill a vacancy. The 2020 town election calendar is, I tell you, this is a long list. Monday, February 3rd, their first day nomination papers will be available at the town clerk's office. Friday, March 13th, is the last day to obtain nomination papers and submit them to the registrars/town clerk. For certification, you have to have 50 certified signatures, and that's by 5:00 p.m. on the 13th of March. Tuesday, March 31st, is the last day to object or withdraw by 5:00 p.m. Friday, April 10th, is the last day to register voters, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Friday, April 24th, the last day to post or publish the warrant for town election and town meeting. Saturday, May 2nd, is the town election from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then Monday, May 18th, will be the town meeting. It is about 10 times longer than our usual announcement. We have to have a talk with Mary.
You did one. No appointments, resignations.
Is there anyone here for open forum? No. All right. Chief, no appointments, no resignations?
No scheduled appointments.
So we are ahead of schedule in our first appointment. Chief?
Senator Ann Goby is asked to come to tonight's meeting to discuss the crumbling concrete foundation report and potential impacts to properties in Charlton discovered in the report. She is here. Welcome.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate, I know I sound maybe a little ominous. And it's not meant to be that way. It's not to be allowed. Good to see Andrew. I worked with Andrew in Palmer, and Barry, and now in Charlton. Thank you for staying in the district, Andrew. It's good to see that. But thank you. And the reason I wanted to come was mainly just to provide a little bit of information. I'll give you the very condensed version, okay? Oh, you want me over here?
Yeah, we're just putting the mic toward you, just so the cameras can pick up.
Hey, what, Jason?
Do you want to sit? Oh, we got Ann in the house.
So yeah, so I'll give you kind of the condensed version of this, and I'll be more than happy another time to come back or to speak at greater length individually or as a group. But because you are the town leaders, because Charlton is mentioned in the report that just came out the beginning of January, I just wanted you to be aware of it in case you did receive any questions. So, very briefly, after I was elected, I had received a phone call from a few legislators in Connecticut, and said, you know, "I don't know if you're aware of this, but we have this problem in Connecticut, and we think that it could very well be affecting some of your communities in Massachusetts." And a long story short, what happened was that there was a quarry in Connecticut, Becker's Quarry, which is still there. And a concrete company, J.J. Modus Concrete Company, was sourcing their concrete from that quarry. In Connecticut, the folks were starting to get phone calls that they were having problems with their foundations. Foundations were actually crumbling. And they traced things back to J.J. Modus and to this Becker's Quarry that seemed to be the problem. And what Connecticut did in talking with people, and how concrete, and if you pick it up, you know, it's basically only good for about 20 miles, they figure with people making the deliveries. If you're in the business, you're not going to be traveling much further out of that. So they basically drew a 20-mile radius around, which encompasses many of the communities, including Charlton. In Connecticut, they have probably up to about 30,000 homes that are affected by this, including an elementary school that was just torn down this past year because of this issue. What happens is this. It's a naturally occurring mineral. It's called perotite. And when perotite, after a number of years, when it's exposed to air and water, it expands. It reacts with other things around it, with the sulfides. And the effect on it, if it's in your foundation, if it's in the concrete, is your foundation starts to crack. And it's not, in the homes that I've been to, that I've seen this, it's not, it's not just like a crack that you would see, you know, from settling the foundation. It's more like a spider web, and some people refer to it as a crocodile skin. And it spreads out in that way, and you can actually put your finger right through it. And unfortunately, as you can imagine, the only thing that you can do is somehow to, is to replace the foundation. We started getting calls, and I say we, myself, some are the lesser, in Long Meadow, because we started to see things. We started to get calls from people in East Long Meadow, Long Meadow. I have a family in Munson that is in the process now of replacing their foundation because this was happening. So I went back, met with Ways and Means folks, were able to get some money in the budget for testing, because that's really the first thing that you have to do, to figure out if you have this issue. Visual testing, you need to have someone that's licensed, that has an idea of what they're looking for, and then actual testing of the material itself. We're working now in Massachusetts with UMass, the state geologist, his name is Stephen Mayby, and Stephen came and gave a presentation to us as well, but they will test it there. We have a reimbursement program going on in Massachusetts right now, so people can be reimbursed for the visual testing, as well as up to 75% of the testing, for the actual testing that has to be sent out to a lab. We are finding homes in Massachusetts that have it, as I mentioned. We've had about 20, 25 people up to this point that have come to us for testing. I can tell you that people are afraid to come forward for a number of reasons. One is that they don't want their banks to know. One of the issues is that this seems to be between homes that were built between 1983 and 2015, because that's when things were coming out of that quarry. The state of Connecticut has an agreement with that quarry that they will not sell, and they will not send anything else, any other residential within the state of Connecticut. We now are working in Massachusetts to try to get that same kind of agreement with that quarry. It doesn't appear, as far as we know, that anyone is going and taking things from that quarry and bringing them into Massachusetts. The other thing people say, "Well, can't you just go back to the corporation, figure out the concrete company, figure out who they sold to?" Sounds, that would be nice. There was a fire. All the records were destroyed. So, unable to do that. A lot of people, because of the length of time, you could have a home that was built in 1983, you could be on the second or third owner, and there's no way for people to have known that this happened. And really, nobody is at fault. But the situation now is that we know that there are homes that are affected by it. We have had calls from people in Charlton that have concerns, so I think you will be hearing more about it. And going forward, I just, again, I want you to be aware of the issue, that we did come out with this report. I'm going to leave you a physical copy, but there is, there's an online copy. And actually, the online's a little bit better, because the maps look better online than they, than they came out printed in this. But again, I want you to kind of be aware of where things were. On the state level, we are looking at other legislation that we can do, and to try to put a few things in place for some protections. I can tell you that the realtors organizations have been fantastic. They've already put in some disclosure pieces that they, when they do homes in the western part of the state. And we've, we've met with the statewide Mass Realtors Group about trying to get on board with things. We've met with banks. We've met with insurance companies. And one of the problems is that, I mean, homeowners insurance, they won't cover something that happens over a long period of time. Now, if your house suddenly collapsed, you would be able to claim that. But a collapse that's going to take 15 years, you're not going to get covered. So there are things that we need to look at. But again, this was really just to make you aware of the issue. That was a very, very quick overview, but I did want you to know that we are taking steps. And Connecticut has been fantastic. The legislators there, the groups that we've been working with have been extremely helpful, kind of telling us what they did wrong, so that we don't make those kind of mistakes moving forward. So I will leave you the hard copy, and again, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know you're on a tight agenda. I don't want to take up any more time, but I'll be happy to answer anything if you have something.
Senator, first off, thank you very much for coming in. Really appreciate.
Sure.
I think the more we give awareness to people, the better off we are. But the obligatory follow-ups, as you mentioned, I was going to make, how do I know if my house is affected? So my first question for you is, what are the next steps for concerned homeowners? Is there a state number they can call? Can they call your office? I mean, ultimately, what is the best way for people to allay any fears they may have?
Yeah. They can, they can call my office, and I have on my website, as well on the state website. We go through the Department of Professional Licensor, is the organization that is helping to coordinate all the testing. So we actually go through them. So there is actually a form that people can fill out online that gets sent in to the Department of Professional Licensor, and they will take a look at that. And then they, they get back to the homeowner to coordinate on testing. But, you know, to start with, it's visual. I mean, you go into your basement and take a look. The problem is, if people have finished basements, if it's behind, you know, that, that, that's an issue. Again, it's only that timeframe that we're looking at, not before that, not after that, because that's when we know that the aggregate was coming, and coming from that specific quarry at that time.
Thank you. And the second piece is, at your convenience, if you could send us the link to the thing. And I'd ask the board's indulgence that we could ask Mary to put it up on the website.
Oh, sure. I'll be happy to do that.
People are concerned about their banks finding out, so they're reluctant to come forward and have a test done. Is there, or can there be, an option for them to have a test done anonymously, and get, so they can get the results, but they're not on some file?
So, we have been, because people have asked that too. And things have been done through DPL, so I don't know necessarily who's being, what they send me at the end of a month. They just let me know what communities that they're hearing from, so that we can at least track it that way to know them. So they, I keep being pretty confident, I can't tell you right now. I would assume, I suppose, someone could make a FOIA request and get that information to know who those people are. But the idea was that there would be some anonymity with it, but no, they can't be totally anonymous because they need to fill out these forms and...
Sir, the chair. Hi. Thank you very much for coming and giving us this presentation. Couple of questions.
Sure.
When it comes to the testing.
Yes.
If someone's concerned about the foundation in their house, and they'd like to have the testing done, could they go to, to the link that we're going to put up? Will there be a list of companies that they can call?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And the cost for the testing, is that something that the homeowner bears?
Right. It varies. The visual testing, the state will pay up to 100% of that, and up to $400. We haven't seen anything go above that. It's usually less than that. And as far as the, the testing that gets sent out, that's somewhere in about the $1,500 to $2,000 range right now that we're getting quotes on, and that will be reimbursed up to 75%.
Okay, so even though there, there may be some initial costs upfront for the homeowner, they can get up to 75% of the more in-depth testing?
As long as they go through, it does need to be approved. It needs to be approved beforehand.
Approved by?
By the Department of Professional Licensor, on those forms that they would be filling out.
Okay, so they should definitely go to the website first, if they're concerned, before they decide to do any testing of their foundation?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Good to know. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Senator Goby, Kurt Eskes, the building inspector in town. You know, the building officials have been aware of this issue for a number of years, and if we thought it was mostly in Connecticut, we knew along the bordering towns it had crept in. My hometown, Long Meadow, I understand that it's there. I did have a contractor approach me the other day, and has a house on the south end of town, and he's engaged with the customer to jack the house up and change the foundation. It's already been tested. I know that Connecticut was discussing, and I'm not quite sure where their legislation had up, for any financial assistance for repairs, and I know, I'm sure you, you folks up in Boston are considering that. So is there anything for repairs from the state?
Well, at this point, there is not, because part of it is that we don't know the extent of the issue. As I mentioned, we've only had about 25 people that have come forward for, for testing. What Connecticut did, because it is such a larger issue there, is that they did, they bonded about $30 million. They did for a bonding. They started a captive insurance to deal strictly with this issue. And they also have charged an extra fee on homeowner's insurance, and it's going into a fund. So everybody's homeowner insurance. And part of the reason that they did that is that if you have a house with this issue, that affects the values on everybody, not just that homeowner. And if you get into a situation, because it's so expensive to take care of, if you have people walking away, and you have abandoned properties, well, we know what that does to, to an area as well. So it is a problem, and that's how the state of Connecticut is dealing with it. We are not anywhere near that point right now. But, you know, the way I look at it, and I've had some pushback. I've had people say, "Oh, why should we, why should we fix somebody's..." You know, "I've got a problem fixing my cellar." You know, people had no idea of knowing this, and I really compare it to a natural disaster. You know, if a tornado came through, as has happened in the past, and the state helps out, because that's what you do. And this is, this is a very unusual circumstance, and there is nobody, nobody's to blame. But the poor homeowner, you know, is going to get stuck with, you know, it's incredible. People can't afford to do that, because right now, that is the only way to repair, is to either remove it off, and there is another company in Connecticut that has a different method. There was a gentleman in Holland that had his replaced, and they did it in pieces. So he was actually able to still live in his home while they took out pieces and put him in it. It took about a three-week, three-week process. And I had a chance to go and watch while that was being done.
Well, I appreciate that you folks up there in Boston have done something.
Yeah, we try and...
You know, we, like we say, we've been watching, and I've been asked, and I was sort of surprised, because we're right on the edge of that zone of where this aggregate was being delivered.
Correct, yeah.
And, and a good reputable contractor was in and says, "Well, what's the process for me to get a permit for this?" And they've already tested the basement and went to a lab, and it was absolutely had this, I can't even say the word.
Perotite.
Perotite, okay. Perotite in it, and I'm waiting for him to give me access to the house, so we can just walk through the process, and I'll get a visual on what this looks like. And I'll certainly put these links up on, on the building commissioners section of the webpage, because I think they're going to start looking to my office for help, if they have any suspicion.
Through, through the chair, very quickly. Kurt, when you get a visual on what these crumbling basements look like, could you just take pictures, and we can put it up on the town's website, so people would know what to actually look for?
There are, I have seen photos on various websites poking around for it, so it does. It looks sort of like the whole foundation is just falling apart. It takes a while for it to happen, and it's caused by this aggregate. It's not the cement that was bad, but it's the rock that they put in is aggregate.
I just, I think that if people could actually see a picture of it, then they would have...
Let me see if I can find something that's in public domain.
Okay.
And see if I can get something up there for that.
That would be very helpful.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, thank you. I'll just leave this with you. That's okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, good night.
She's still, we're seven o'clock. Change your license type?
Attaches request for a change of license type from a wine and malt package store to an all alcohol package store, submitted by attorney Arthur Pearlman on behalf of Sri Somnath Inc., doing business as Country Farms, 57 North Main Street in Charlton. They've completed the paperwork required for this request. Chairman should open the hearing by reading the public hearing notices placed in the paper and sent to the abutters. Public hearing notice, the Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 28th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. To act on a request for a change in license type from a wine malt package store license to an all alcohol package store license for Sri Somnath Inc., DBA Country Farms, 57 North Main Street, Charlton, Mass. Kanagi L. Swadia, manager. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified, or submit concerns in writing. We'll declare this hearing open at 6:55 p.m. How are you?
If it pleases the board, my name is Arthur Pearlman. I happen to have some affidays. Can I approach?
Sure.
I don't know who gets the original, but I do an affidavit.
Chief.
That, these are copies of it, that just takes care of the idea of notice. You have to give the ABC to show there was notice. I represent Kanagi Swadia and Sri Somnath Inc. They're seeking a change of their beer and wine license to an all alcohol license at 57 North Main Street in Charlton. I just submitted to you affidavit and exhibits relative to published notice, mailed notice for this type of a transaction is not required. Sri Somnath is a Massachusetts corporation, and Kanagi Swadia is the sole officer, director, and shareholder. Ms. Swadia is currently residing at 885 Eastwood Street in Southbridge. Ms. Swadia has owned and operated Country Farms, which is the store in question, with a beer and wine package store license since 2015. The business is operated, I believe you are familiar with it, in a good, clean, businesslike manner, with friends and family working there, and should continue to operate in the same manner. The business currently operating at 57 North Main Street in Charlton is open seven days a week. It opens at 5:30 in the morning. It closes at 9:00, Monday through Saturday. Sunday, it closes at 8:00. Sales of alcoholic beverages begin at 8:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. on Sunday. Ms. Swadia intends to maintain those hours. The layout of the store will also be maintained. Nothing regarding the operation of the business is changing. Strictly asking for a change in the license type. Ms. Swadia, already operating with a liquor license, is familiar with the laws relative to the sale of alcohol. She will continue to uphold all the statutory laws, as well as any rules or regulations with the town of Charlton. I respectfully request that the change of type of license from an all alcohol package store license, from a beer and wine package store license to an all alcohol package store license be approved.
Is there anyone else here to speak at the hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
The motion is second. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. We'll declare the hearing closed at 6:58 p.m.
Mr. Chairman, I think most of us have been in the store multiple times in our lives, and I've never seen any issues. Everything's always been fine. Lest anyone ask, there is an additional one also still available for a package store in the town of Charlton, in case anyone wanted to know that. We have tons of restaurant licenses, as always, so please open a restaurant. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Leave a motion in a second, two seconds. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Next item then, Chief, would be our seven or ten public hearing?
Attaches request from Roy C. Gunter, third managing member for Gunter LLC, to remove and sell 10 acres of land from Chapter 61A located on Lot 14, Boucher Road, assessment map 40-V-8.23 to Kelsey and Jason Foskett. The planning board, Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, and Water Sewer Commission have all reviewed the request, and have no objection to the town of Charlton choosing not to exercise their right of first refusal for this request. The chairman should again open the public hearing by reading the attached public hearing notice.
Thank you, Chief. Please be advised that the Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 28th, 2020, at 7:10 p.m. at the Charlton Town Hall, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. 01507. To act on a request by Roy C. Gunter III, managing member for Gunter LLC, to remove and sell 10 acres of land from Chapter 61A located on Lot 14, Bachelor Road, assessment map 40-B-8.23 to Kelsey and Jason Foskett. Anyone interested should appear at the date and time specified, or submit concerns in writing. We'll declare that hearing open at 7:00 p.m. Is there anyone here to be at this hearing?
Through the chair, though, just a housekeeping item. It's only seven o'clock. I worry, again, letter of the law, it says 7:10, if someone intended to come. I don't know if we want to take business before this. Just, again, just...
Oh, we can leave the hearing open and come back to it.
Yeah, we can skip to new business. You can probably bang on a desk.
Thank you for bringing that up. I don't anticipate it, but never know.
Yep.
All right, so we'll also press the 7:15.
79.
Common Vic.
Yeah, my iPad just crashed. It's going so fast.
Do you want me to read it?
I can.
He did. Totally crashed. I'll be right out.
Okay, so we're doing the common Vic, okay. Attaches request for a common victual license for Michael O'Boy. Nimjik for Yankee Diner LLC, 16 Worcester Road, Charlton. The hours of operation are Monday through Wednesday, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thursday and Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, and Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They've completed the necessary paperwork. I would recommend the board approve the request.
Anytime you can attract new business, it's great. Motion to approve.
Second.
Turn it through the chair.
Yeah, this one's dead, so. Someone will have to, somebody else is gonna have to read the, or change iPads, because this one won't log back into it.
Oh, yeah.
We have a spare?
We got a spare.
Trying to get it back, who knows? Re-authentificate. Love technology. Paper was great.
Not tonight.
If you see I'm old school.
You can.
We need timing.
Karen can run it.
I'm not on this page, as you.
What did we do? Page 79. I think Deb has the floor, though.
Deb? Yes, regarding this common vic license. I have been aware of this for some time. I have a friend of mine from Oxford who knows, Mike Nimzik. And he's been putting a lot of work into the facility. You've seen a few different paths. You've seen repair trucks there, updating the kitchen, updating the electrical system. This gentleman has a lot of experience in running restaurants. I just wanted to share that with all of you.
I'm excited. That's awesome.
You can get a Burger Bell.
A restaurant?
Is it BYOB? Because I'm getting there.
Well, if she was here tonight, we could have.
I'm just wanting to, Burger and a beer, it's the only one. But you know what? I'll start with a burger.
I'm getting there. I'm afraid it's gonna crash, you know? Which one are we on now?
I made the motion for 79 to approve.
What page are we on?
Page 79.
79.
Almost there. So is there any other discussion? Leave a motion in a second. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Andrew, well-oiled machine. That's where we are.
Great. All of a sudden, your iPad goes blink, it's gone.
That's technology, got a lot of.
Chief, let's move on to special alcoholic beverage license, number two.
Attaches request for a special alcoholic beverage license from Spotlight Dance Academy for a pasta dinner fundraiser to be held on Saturday, February 8th, 2020, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM at St. Joseph's Church Hall. Police Department, Fire Department, Building Commissioner have all approved the request. For the board's policy, the license, if approved, should be issued for two additional days, which is to allow delivery the day before the event and for pickup the day after the event, with no sales allowed. I would recommend that the board approve this license as requested, with the dates on the license to be February 7th, 2020, to February 9th, 2020.
Motion to approve as stated.
Second.
Leave a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
You want to do the BOS policy review?
We have old business. One item, Civilian Traffic Commission.
Yeah, that'll be quick.
Do that.
Will it be?
Quick.
Just my letter, we haven't heard back.
All right, so let's do, let's knock that one out, Chief.
Okay. At the board's January 14th, 2020 meeting, you discussed two concerns. The Civilian Traffic Commission brought forward, which were regarding traffic at the intersections and the makeup of the commission. Letters are attached. I was directed to send a letter to Mass. Highway District 3 Office, asking if they could look at the intersections for Stafford Street and Center Depot Road, Stafford Street and Brookville Road, and Dresser Hill Road, Saundersdale Road, and Schoolhouse Road, and provide traffic calming measures for consultation on strategies to change drivers' mindsets and behaviors. You'd asked that we put on it, I attached a copy of the thought that I sent. I have not received response back yet, as it was just five or six days ago.
Thank you for the update, Chief.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think the, the second piece there was what, and this is my memory getting old. What did we decide around the composition of it? Were we going to?
Continue with it or dissolve it?
Yeah, exactly. Did we, did, did we make a decision on that?
I don't believe.
I, I don't think we did. That's what I was wondering about, if we could figure it out in five minutes or not. Either way, it's fine. I just, I, I think many members of the commission from the meeting or meetings that I attend, meeting that I attended, they were uncertain about their charge based upon their limited authority, for lack of a better term. So that's why I think, you know, they asked last time around getting other people involved. So I think the question before this board is, are we going to dissolve and reconstitute? Or are we just gonna dissolve altogether, or are we gonna keep it as is?
Through the chair? I don't think keeping it as is is an option.
Agreed.
So take that off the table. I think reconstituting it, chaining its makeup is a, is a much better option than dissolving it.
So you don't want to dissolve it and see what the feedback is from the state. If the state takes over, then they wouldn't need the commission.
Well.
If, that's a big if, because the state may never take over.
They may want, they may, pardon me, rather. The commission in itself may be helpful to act as a sounding board for concerned residents to say, I'd like you to look at X, Y, or Z. Perhaps one recommendation is what, is once Andrew gets up to speed a little bit, and I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't put this at the top of your list, but you put this on a to-do list to say, how best can we elicit and solicit resident concerns, feedback, and how do we funnel that to the appropriate folks to actually take action?
So I think one thing to consider going forward is that that was really the charge of the commission we already had, and that they were open to the public for exactly that purpose already. And if the public didn't come to engage the commission previously, then either they're not going to do it if we do it again, or we have to find a new way to convey that message to the public and to get them involved.
Through the chair?
No.
Based on conversations we had with Mr. McGrath two weeks ago, I don't think the issue is that the citizens aren't coming to them with concerns. I think the issue is more of we need a way to be more proactive when they do come to us with concerns. So they'd like to have a different makeup of the committee, so that they can have people there who are actually decision and policymakers.
So do you want to have this on the next agenda, and we can discuss if we're making the commission?
I think so, yes.
I mean, either in February or March, either one is fine. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I think the names that were bandied about last time are probably excellent choices, it's just a matter of, you know, do people have the time and/or delegates, and then we can make a formal vote, if you will, to figure it out.
I think we need to do that. We need to make a formal vote, and we need to have a formal request.
And hopefully, we'll have gotten some kind of response, because that's two, at least two weeks from now. They'll give the state three, three weeks if we have responded.
Yeah, so why don't we put it on February 25th, and hopefully we'll get something. If not, do it in March.
I said, it's still not 7:10.
It's 7:08.
But we're close. We're, we're close.
We, we can just schedule a meeting, because that should only take 30 seconds.
So let's run down to the policy review, Chief.
Scheduling meetings?
Yeah. What page is that on?
99.
99. The board's January 14th, 2020 meeting, Selectman Borowski. Ask if the board had any interest in changing the meetings from every other week to the first and third, or the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. Chairman Singer asked, could this be put back on the agenda for discussion? While reviewing the selectmen's policies, three policies deal with the board's meetings, which are agenda closing, board of selectmen meetings, and meeting postings. There are no policies that state the board meets every other Tuesday. The only reference to every other Tuesday is mentioned on the town's website. And the town bylaws for the selectmen state, Section 50-7, organization. The selectmen, within seven days after each annual election, shall meet, elect a chairperson and otherwise organize, and fix the time and the place of their regular meetings. They shall adopt their own rules of procedure. And a copy of that policy is the next page.
So, Mr. Chairman, this one is, like I said, this is very low-hanging fruit, because we can even keep it as is. Truly, it was just a matter of, do we as a board want to say, to, to formalize when we officially meet, knowing we're always gonna have ad hoc meetings or cancellations regardless? So again, I was just throwing it out there to say, if, if the citizenry always knew that barring, barring a notice, we were always gonna meet second and fourth or first and third, that was our schedule. But even if we want to keep it as is, that's fine. I really just wanted to bring it up for discussion. And again, selfishly, it does help me around work planning, but outside of that, it's not the end of the world, even if we kept it as is, so it's completely, I'm, I'm fine either way.
Yeah, I have no problem making it the second and fourth, and you know, that's not preclusive for meeting every, every week in the summer anyway.
Yeah, exactly. So it doesn't really matter.
So, but I have, I have no problem with that. My only question is, the bylaw, town meeting would have to vote correct for that change, for a bylaw change? So I'm, I guess my questions are, do we have to even change the bylaw?
I don't think so.
Or can we just designate the second and fourth Tuesday, and then, within seven days after each annual, we'll just designate annually the second and fourth Tuesday?
I would argue that, in the absence of, of it being called out in the bylaw, that is up to the board's prerogative to set their own schedule, so.
Which we do.
Yeah, which we do anyway.
That's what we do every year.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, no, it allows, it says, and fix, and fix the time and place of their regular meetings after that, and so you, it's up to the board, so.
When would you want to begin? February or March? Since February dates are already posted.
Yeah, do it in March. I mean, that's assuming the rest of the board even wants to do this.
So as of March, we would meet the second and fourth Tuesday of every month?
Of every month.
Or first and third, or, or really whatever we want. I mean, it's, again, I'm fine any of these options.
I think the second and fourth.
Second and fourth, it feels better.
Yes, I think the second and fourth. I, I agree. I think the second and fourth work, and.
That being said, make a motion that our formal policy, or informal policy, that we're gonna set our meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, knowing that we're gonna change it a lot regardless during this summer.
Beginning with the month of March.
Begin with the month of March.
Let's see if we can figure out that exact date in March. Hang on. I can second that. That would be, that would be as of March 10th, then.
So we have a motion in a second to begin the select meetings, to begin having the select meetings every second and fourth Tuesday, beginning with March 10th.
Yes.
2020. And further discussion?
Just funny now, they think about that, we're going into budget season, and we're gonna meet almost every week anyway, but still, we'll be formal.
There you go.
And we have our meeting schedules for that Tuesday anyways.
See?
That worked out.
It's all coming together.
There you go.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Look at the 7:10.
7:10. It's actually 7:12, but there's no one waiting, so it's like. We're rolled back to our 7:10. The hearing is already open, so we will just ask if there is anyone here to comment on the hearing regarding Lot 14, Voucher Road. And I do not see anyone here for that.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Leave a motion in a second to close the hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none. All of us in favor, please say aye.
No, I'm sorry, I.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. The hearing is now closed at 7:13 PM.
Motion to approve the release of Chapter 61, pardon me, of, of Lot 14, Boucher Road, from last Chapter 61.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Oh, by the way, once again, special thanks to all the departments for actually formally saying that, that the town can't use it for other reasons. That's very helpful.
Yes, we discovered that recently. Chief, let's go. It's actually 7:14.
Anybody here for Colburn Road? 107 Colburn Road? 7:14, we have a minute. By the time I read this.
You can read it again, and then it will be 7:15 by that time.
Attaches request from George P. Karitsky to remove approximately seven and a half acres of land from Chapter 61A, located at 107 Colburn Road, assessors map 57-A-19, owned by Daniel S. and Holly A. Stevens. The planning board, Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, and Water and Sewer Commission have all reviewed the request and have no objection to the town of Charlton choosing not to exercise their right of first refusal for this request. Chairman again should open the public hearing by reading the attached public hearing notice.
And you recommend the board approve the request?
I recommend the board approve this request. It is 7:15.
7:15. Public hearing notice, please be advised that the Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 28th, at 7:15 PM at Charlton Town Hall, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass., 01507. To act on a request by attorney George P. Karitsky to remove approximately 7.46 acres of land from Chapter 61A, located at 107 Colburn Road, assessors map 57A-19, owned by Daniel S. and Holly A. Stevens. Anyone interested should appear at the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing, and we'll declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on, on this hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion in dual seconds to close the hearing. All of us in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll declare the hearing closed at 7:15 PM.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion not to exercise our right of first refusal for this request.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All of us in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. We've already done all of our new business, our old business, and we can move on, and we did the policy rev, no, policy review, we moved on to the committee reports, Chief.
Page 93.
I don't have anything. That's all of you.
Karen, do you want to go first? Actually, I was going to ask you to go first, because I thought I saw someone, I'd have to, if I may be excused.
So which one do you do first?
The chair? I'd like to, I have three items under committee reports. It's been a very busy month.
So what, number, sign of number two?
So can we start with the Charlton Sustainability Center, because I have a gentleman here from the Sustainability Center who'd like to come up and speak?
Yeah, what page is that?
It's not on a page. It's just me talking.
Okay.
Ta-da. So I don't know if all of you are aware that there's been a group of concerned individuals, spearheaded by.
Bill Colway.
Bill Colway. Make sure you speak in, into the microphone. You can introduce yourself and state your address and.
Okay. Bill Colway, 13 Hanton Road, Charlton, Massachusetts. Basically, I, should I do a little bit of history of this?
Well, I, I received an email, I believe, from a group of individuals.
Yep.
Because they were interested in discussing how to deal with yard waste.
Yep.
Debris. I know they originally reached out to Bill, and Bill wasn't able to be there, so I was very grateful that I was, I was contacted and able to attend. And because there is an issue with people getting rid of yard waste in Charlton. In addition to that, we have to start thinking long-term about what we're gonna do when we know, when we can no longer count on Casella, because that will come up sooner rather than later. So this is a, sort of an ad hoc committee. It's nothing formalized yet, but I know that we're working towards that going down the road.
Yep.
And I just, I wanted to talk a little bit about the tree cycle. I don't know if you guys were aware of the tree cycle program that happened in December? I have a flyer here. It was a way for individuals in the town of Charlton to safely recycle their Christmas trees. Numerous groups got together, volunteered their time, including our highway department and individuals, and I believe there was 25 trees.
25 trees were returned, and the people are really happy that we're doing it. Again, this is the first season of doing something like this. I physically went around to businesses myself, talked to the owners, went to the churches. I went to even preschools, because the moms run the business in the house, so. Yeah, that tree's going there, and I, even my neighbors, everywhere I went. Because I, I felt that being a 30-year veteran of this town, raising a family here, I want to make it better. And I've contracted Lyme disease pretty seriously, so I basically wanted to do something about it. So my effort is to, in these concentrated areas of housing, cul-de-sacs, things like that, to try to give an avenue. And most people that I know were bringing yard trimmings, you know, the sticks and the branches, you have a big brown bag, and you put it in the car, you hold, you touch it once, so that bugs don't get all over you, and then you brought it down 169, and you got rid of it. It was great. And then a change occurred, where the address changed to where we can bring the material, the yard trimmings and such. And it specifically said, no yard debris, no yard trim. So now, at least in my neighborhood, in Carroll Hill Estates, everybody's backyard is up to their shoulders with this stuff, which is a vector place for things that carry Lyme disease, and the other five diseases that are happening. I've been a year and a half into it. I go to Mass. General. I've got symptoms of early onset dementia, I'm 57, chronic fatigue syndrome. I'm very athletic, so it's very painful for me. So instead of complaining, I wanted to do something about it. I went to my doctor here at Harrington. She said it's endemic in our town. Literally, that's the word she used, endemic. I had the CVS pharmacist here, got a flu shot, the same person that originally diagnosed me a year and a half ago. She said doxycycline starting to not work here. They're just over-prescribing it. So we can't medicate our way or spray our way out of this. There needs to be some solution. So this is the committee that we started, and this was just the interim, the integration of it. Kathleen Walker and I kicked it off from the Board of Health. The Board of Health recognized it was a problem, and so we're trying to come up with some, some solutions. This is kind of an awareness, I suppose, of where we're trying to go with this thing. It's kind of shocking to me that there's no avenue. It was just like gone. We had a service, and now we don't. So then, the residents, myself and other people, with Kathleen Walker, and Deborah's great, and Todd Gerard, with their guidance, we're trying to get something out of this, but it really needs to be a, a solution. But it really needs to be a solution, because, I don't know about you guys, but we're spraying our yard now because I don't want my family to get sick. And this year, out in the barbecue, I had a crop duster over my house go twice to get rid of the triple E. So I don't think we can spray and pesticide our way out of the problem. I think we need to find a better solution. And just not having the material in your yard is a good idea. The other thing about the tree cycling, I did investigations with the CDC, and there is these things you can build with these chips, these wood chips. They're called tick guards in your yard, and you put them around your gardens, your vegetable gardens and things, and the ticks don't like to cross it. So the idea of that is to introduce the idea of taking this material and repurposing it, okay? And I got the idea by talking to Heather, the director of the DPW, and doing some benchmarking before even this team was conformed with Deb, Kathleen Walker, and myself. And she said the most popular thing they've done is introduce this tree cycling type of program. Because then they take the chippings, and it's pure. It's just tris, Christmas trees. There's nothing in it. It's just Christmas trees. And then they put it in schools, and they put it in the public, the public buildings. It's pure and clean. So that's how we started, and we're trying to move forward with it, you know, because it's not something that should just be ignored, I think. I really don't.
So this is a way that we can tree cycle our Christmas trees and other materials. The chipping of the trees was done by a local landscaper, volunteered his equipment and his time. But having, having the material to use as a tick barrier is extraordinarily important. Eventually, spring will be here, and with spring comes the ticks. With ticks come Lyme disease. You were talking about spraying earlier for mosquitoes. We can't keep using pesticides. It's, it's, we're, you know, it's poison falling from the sky. But there are natural ways to do integrated pest management, and the town, I think, has the ability to do it, and people really want it. So there's about five people on this committee right now, and I see it being formally organized, perhaps through the Board of Health.
That's who started it?
Yep.
When I originally called, I called the DPW, because in all the towns have ever experienced it, the DPW is a place, when I moved here originally, we had a dump. And before the dump, there was a place to bring Christmas trees and yard debris and things like that, and that all went away. And then it moved down to, onto one sixty-nine, which is all fine. And then we made this switch, right? So that's why we're having this conversation. So that's, there's an example right there. I just forgot my train of thought. Sorry.
That's, that's, that's absolutely fine. You've been so wonderful in spearheading this, and I wanted to bring it up to the Board of Selectment tonight, just to make sure that all of you were aware of what's going on. And to let you know that I reached out to Andrew. Andrew will be at the next meeting on February eleventh. And I, I think this will be a very important committee to have in town going forward.
And just, I don't want to go off on a tangent. I know we have a schedule. But just to the point that he brought up and for public knowledge. So you mentioned you can't spray, protect, anything else, but there is a product, I will just throw out this so that people are aware, called Promethrin, that was manufactured either by or for the military. And it's available for civilian use. Now, like, you can buy it in most sporting goods stores, but even Walmart and Amazon. Black and yellow aerosol can, pump spray, whatever. One little nine-dollar aerosol can is enough to treat two complete outfits, and it repels and kills ticks. So if you go hiking, fishing, hunting, anytime outside in the woods, one can can do two outfits of your kid's clothes or your clothes. And the nice thing is, if you buy Promethrin-treated clothing that's manufactured within, in the fabric, it will actually stay in there for up to one hundred wanderings. When you buy it off the shelf and spray your own clothes, it will still stay in the fabric through six different washings. So it's a very affordable and effective way to repel and kill ticks by treating your own clothing if you're going to be outside.
Just, just to back you, back you up, we do do that. My family does. I'm a trail maintainer for the Midstate Trail in town. I'm also a trail maintainer for the Appalachian Trail in Vermont, Maine, and I've been doing it for fifteen years, okay? And when that clothing wears off, you get ticks all over you. So you know it works. However, I will tell you right now that when you're in your backyard, and you're at the pool, and the kids are running around, you're not going to tick them all up and spray them all down. You just want to go hang out in your backyard and have a barbecue. You know what I'm saying? So what you can do to mitigate that, you know, I think is really imperative. Because my kids were raised that way, and I want the next generation kids to be, you know, to be able to have that freedom. That's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All good?
All good. Thank you so much, Bill. We'll see you next week.
Yeah, no, thank you all for doing that. And not only do I, I'm aware, I'm absolutely in favor of this, so this, yeah, I would love to see a formalized plan to say, here's, here's what we can do. But I, but I agree that probably the DPW needs to get involved relatively quickly so we can basically develop, basically say, how are you going to help us do this type of thing? So I'm one hundred percent on board.
Good. Our next meeting is February eleventh.
So we'll move on to...
We have minutes from that meeting, and I'll make sure that they're available at the Selectment's office. Next thing would be Fay Mountain Farm. That's going to be very brief. That committee hasn't met in a while. I'm hoping that we will get back together in the, in the springtime. However, I did get an update from Neil Johnson, who is the farmer up at Fay Mountain Farm. I'm not sure if you guys have met him yet. He got married recently. And he, but he did email me when he got back from his honeymoon and wanted me to know that this coming year, they're not only have pick-your-own apples, as they always do, but they're going to have pick-your-own peaches in the summertime.
That's cool.
Yep, the peach orchard is coming along just fine, and they've also started constructing tunnel structures for raspberry production. And there will be a vegetable washing station at the farm itself.
Sweet. Now I know where to get supplies for the dehydrator.
Yes, you do. Fay Mountain Farm has grown every year, and I'm really looking forward to seeing the peach orchards and the raspberry production. Do you want me to finish up?
Come on, you're on a roll.
Don't lose my momentum. So just prior to this meeting, I was at a marijuana advisory committee meeting. We had two businesses there, Green Gold Group and Fourscore. And we hadn't met in a while, just because of the holidays and schedule, so we had a lot to go over. There was a very good discussion on vaping. Because as you know, the vaping ban has been lifted. Companies are starting to reintroduce vaping into the community. This includes marijuana and cannabis vaping. But they're doing much more stringent testing. Every vaping device will come with a scorecard telling you where it was, what's been tested, what's in it, and that's available. And at the point-of-sale registers at Green Gold Group, there is warning sign and a disclaimer regarding vaping products, okay? I didn't know if you were aware of this, but as of, as of June of this year, all flavored tobaccos, including menthols, will be off the shelves in Massachusetts. No more flavored tobaccos, not even menthol, at least not in Massachusetts.
That's for cigarettes only. Is that also applied to pipes and everything else?
That's a very good question.
I thought it was, I think it's all tobacco.
I think it's, I think it's...
I should say all, every single...
I think it is all tobacco products and all vaping products, yes.
I remember a long time ago, my dad, he smelled the apple from the pipe.
Backwood cigars.
Yeah, there you go.
So right now, Green Gold Group has about, on average, about twenty customers per day. They would like to begin rolling out recreational sales, but again, they're waiting on the Cannabis Control Commission to finally sign off on everything. And that's been a lengthy process. I'm sure everybody has seen it in the news. There are people who have waited quite some time. There is a backlog of paperwork. They just instituted a new integrated computer system. And as we know, sometimes they don't always roll out as smoothly as you like, but everything will now be in-house with the Cannabis Control Commission.
Hopefully, they can speed that up.
Well, there is legislation out there pending right now. That is in the, no pun intended, Joint Committee on Cannabis Policy.
Well played.
Thank you. I have to laugh every time I say that. Regarding the application process and also regarding the host community agreements and how they're going to be now overseen completely. If the legislation goes through by the Cannabis Control Commission. So we've been tracking that, and I'm going to get all that information to Jim Philbrook, who's the chair of the Marijuana Advisory Committee. So far, only about eight bills have been reported favorably out of the Cannabis Policy Commission, uh, sorry, Cannabis Policy Committee. But everything has to be reported favorably out by February fifth for it to move forward. And I think that's my final update.
Thank you, Ms. Noel.
You're welcome.
The last item on the agenda, since we're out of order, will be the Public Safety Building Capital Campaign update.
Sure. As you all know, in late December, the Charlton Board of Selectment appointed a steering committee comprised of Charlton residents to serve on the Capital Campaign Steering Committee to basically raise funds for the Charlton Public Safety Facility. Tonight, I've been providing short reports. We are up and running, and tonight I wanted to introduce to you, for those who may not know, one of the co-chairs who took the time to be here, Steve Coleman. Did you want to come up, Steve, and say a few words? The other co-chair of that committee is Noreen Johnson. Thank you for coming.
Good evening.
Please do.
Hi, Steve. So we had a meeting this past week, just kind of got organized. As you know, if you have not seen, the press release went out yesterday. And the Telegram will have that story tomorrow, and we have some, we've got some press requests today that we'll be following up with late this week, early next week. Ms. Bewak can follow up and give a little more detail, but she's working with the Finance Director to have the process of being able to accept the donations hopefully finalized this week. We have had, excuse me, we've had a few thousand dollars pledged already, committed. We haven't been able to receive anything because the account's not set up. But we already have several thousand dollars that have been pledged to the Capital Campaign. So one of the things that we talked about the other night was a series of family-type events to encourage the community to come out, not only donate, but be able to participate in some sort of a, of a community gathering and related evening. So we have a lot of thoughts and ideas. We're looking forward to getting everything kicked off, and certainly if, if the board or the new town administrator, welcome. Certainly, if anybody has any thoughts and ideas, reach out to myself and Noreen, and we will bring that to the committee, but we're looking forward to getting working.
And just to, just to read it, I'd like to also not only thank all the committee members, again, they're all volunteers, all residents and very talented. But also our, the employees here, like, like our Finance Director and our accountant, who have been working with us very closely to make this become a reality and to be able to accept payment. A restricted fund has already been set up with our, thanks to our Finance Director. And as Steve had said, that by the end of this week, we should be ready to take checks as of Thursday. That's what I'm going with. And currently, we are working on the solicitation material, and we have to literally be careful and, and make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's, as they say. But we anticipate, and I, we're shooting for maybe in a few weeks before we officially launch, but doing a lot of work behind the scenes, and again, I thank everyone for that. And stay tuned. Much more information to come every month, or every, oh, wait a minute, every second and fourth Tuesday, we will be providing a report. But thank you. Thank you for coming.
The last thing that I just wanted to mention was, obviously, we'll be working close with the Public Safety Building Committee, and we've made the decision that we're going to share a social media site. So we're not going to be launching our own separate capital campaign. So all of the information that the Capital Campaign Committee will be putting out, it will be funneled through the Public Safety Building Committee web, Facebook page. So that way, all the information is sort of one-stop shop, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel as far as starting a following base, so we will be sharing that social media presence.
And being, again, I want to thank them too for doing so much work for so many years, quite honestly, the effort that's been put in. And we've been directing like questions specifically for the building project to Steve to go send it to them. I know you're very knowledgeable in that. And mostly, if it's questions pertaining to the Capital Campaign, to either Noreen or myself. But if you have a question, ask it. We'll get, definitely, we're formulating FAQs, for frequently asked questions, so now's the time to send them in. You can send them to me, actually, too, at karen.sbewak@townofcharlton.net, if it has to do with the Capital Campaign. But we welcome the questions. We'll answer them in our solicitation material, and I'd just like to thank everyone for their cooperation.
Thanks to Karen, Steve, and absentia, Noreen. You heard well to work.
Thank you very much.
I, I can't thank you enough, Karen, for doing this. I know that, you know, you've run capital campaigns before. I appreciate you taking the initiative. You know that the Public Safety Building is a high priority. And you've taken the initiative to move forward with it and come up with, you know, an alternative funding source, let's hope. And I think we talked about the difference between needs and wants and a public safety building. That's a need. That's not a want. That's a need. We got to have it. So everything you've done has not fallen on deaf ears. It is greatly appreciated. You and the rest of the committee and the co-chairs. Thank you so much.
Again, I thank you, but again, all I did was kind of guide it and ask, and people responded, so could, thank, I'm very grateful. I'm very grateful for that.
Shows you how much support there really is out there for it.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have two items on the agenda.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. The students' like persons' report, and then we'll have the town administrative's report.
Hello. All right, just a couple of things. This coming Friday and Saturday, January thirty-first and February first, will be the Central Mass Show Choir Festival at Shepherd Hill, and we will be hosting twenty-four groups from all across New England. February fifth is the monthly music parents' meeting at Shepherd Hill at six. February eleventh is the course selection parent breakfast with guidance at nine a.m. for eighth graders from both Dudley Middle School and Charlton Middle School to meet with guidance and pick their courses. There will be a booster club meeting on the same day at seven P. M. Currently, this week, the National Honor Society is raising money for one of our Shepherd Hill families that is suffering some pretty crippling medical bills right now. And we are throwing pies at teachers and administrators. So at all four lunches today, tomorrow, and Thursday, people are paying two dollars for one pie or five dollars for three. Today alone, we raised two hundred fifty dollars. And, yeah, each day, there's a cycle of teachers and stuff. Tomorrow, I plan to throw a pie at our principal, Mr. Chaplin. And, yeah, it's been getting a lot of, everybody's involved in this stuff. They're, they're getting their lunch and whipping it as hard as they can, so it's for a really good cause.
Why, just forget what we're doing on Old Home Day.
If I could just interject, I saw something like that on Facebook, and I thought if, if you got the few board selectmen to donate a face or two, it might be a capital...
I think they should do that with the vice chair and clerk of every board.
I think as long as that's true, this Old Home Day time, that would be an excellent idea.
It should be a dump tank, I think, for time ago.
Do I have volunteers now for pie?
I will volunteer whoever the next clerk is.
Okay. TA and clerk. And last but not least, there are a couple of our track stars which continue to impress and break records in the state. Emma Sullivan, Matty Marsh, and Lizzie Gonzalez are now Division Three relay champions in the four-by-four-hundred race. And Senior Matty Marsh now holds the fifty-five meter record in the state after last weekend's track meet.
Very nice.
Thank you. That's all. Questions?
Just one question. You said there's a family that's in need.
Yes, we...
Medical expenses. I don't want to share their personal information, but if there's any way you could send us an email, let us know how we could help, maybe? Okay.
If anybody on the board wants to.
Cool. I can do that, definitely.
Very nice. Thank you.
Any questions, Chief?
Just very briefly, transition to town administrative goal is next Monday, so...
Why, why are you smiling?
I wanted to get out of my seat worse today, so...
I will be taking residents back up at eighty-five Masonic Home Road, so that's it.
Does your hat and coat watch your heart?
All you'll see is my taillight.
Can I just say thank you for everything you've done the last few months? You have gone above and beyond, as always. You expected nothing less, and you didn't give anything less.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I would like to remind anyone who's watching, neither did the chief step up, big time, but he did so for free. The chief did this extra duty at no additional cost to the town, so that also, I think, cannot be overlooked.
Very true.
Which leads to, I believe we're going to be discussing some reviews for the chiefs coming up in the next few months.
For all the chiefs.
Yes, lest anyone wander at home.
Anything else? Anything else?
Nope.
I'd like to ask, just based on the big, the pie market...
Can, can we, come up here, please?
And when you do, you have to sit down, right hand up, say, "I state your name."
Steve Rose, Seventeen O'Booster Road, I, based on the, on the, on the chief's dedication to the community and, and his donation, I think Anna would, Anna would be more than happy to let the chief appoint a few Board of Selectmen to be able to accept a pie in the face for donation.
I would agree, I'm also currently a member of the Old Home Day Committee, so...
Of course, who still has boss, but whatever.
Then Anna doesn't put it on you, but it puts it on him.
You're killing me, Steve.
It's his farewell.
Chief, choose wisely, just like I said.
So let me, so let me ask you a question. I know you've qualified in the military with a few things, was a pie one of them?
No.
Okay. All right, is there any other business then?
I just, I too wanted to say, really, I really appreciate what you did, and it was a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
I truly mean that, so, thank you.
Learned a lot, and I, and I thank you all for your help and guidance, because I know I've helped out all of you at one point or another over the last four months, and I really appreciate it, thank you.
Not that we're good.
I'll happily entertain any more motions.
Announce our next meeting?
Yep.
We already did, but we'll do it again. Our next BOS regular meeting is going to be February eleventh, twenty twenty, at six thirty P. M. here in the Selectmen speaking room.
And to the chair, just to those ends, especially those folks at home, we kind of touched on it tonight on the periphery, I asked, and David has agreed, that we're going to have a, the introductory discussion around a potential mosquito spring program in town, so I'd actually like to extend, extended invitation to our friends over on the Board of Health, and Jim Philbrook as well, to see, just to kind of get their thoughts on, is it worth, and again, nothing's written in stone, this is literally, let's start having conversations, in case people are wondering why we're doing it now in January, soon to be February, it's because this may cost money, and in order to plan for the spring and summer, you have to start now to get it in the budget, so, you know, that's how all this starts, I mean, there's literally months lead up to really anything that we want to do for any of next year, and I'm looking at Andrew now, because he's going to be thrown right, literally right into the fire of budget planning, so...
Ready to go?
Yeah, I, I have faith in you.
And when we do meet, and we, and we will discuss it, I will provide, because people will know we're talking about it, some of the history and some of the challenges we've encountered when this came up in the past.
Cool.
Sounds good.
Thanks for that. Unless anyone has anything else, motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, a discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously, we're now adjourned.
Thirteen minutes off.
Still though, I'm impressed with you.